Thank you, colleagues. Thank you for the recognition, Counselor Ploza. Thank you for those comments. Item three is review of confidential matters to -- sorry, review of confidential matters to be discussed in public. There are none. Item four, counsel in closed session. This is where I require a change of order motion to move item four, counsel in closed session, and the third report of counsel in closed session to after stage 13 bylaws. I'll look for a mover and a seconder to do that. Counselor Ploza, Counselor Van Mirburgan. We'll open that vote in the system.
Counselor Van Holst. Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to zero.
Minutes. Item 5.1, I require a motion to approve the minutes held on the meeting of February 15, 2022. Counselor Van Mirburgan, Counselor Hillier. Any discussion or changes? Okay, we'll open the approval of the minutes in the system as well.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I'm not sure if the vote is open yet, but my screen in eScribe never stopped saying voting in progress after the last vote was closed, so I'm not sure if there's something going on.
Counselor, I can advise that the vote for the minutes did come up. I would suggest perhaps refreshing, but if you wanted to cast your vote for this matter, we can do that manually.
Counselor, this has happened to me before. Try clicking on the voting in progress at the top. It should reopen the vote that it was in progress.
Thank you. It did finally work, but I had done that a couple of times and it wasn't working, but now it's all good. Thank you.
Thank you. Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to zero.
Okay, for petitions, we need to deal with item 6.1 and 6.2 separately. These are expropriations and initiations of expropriations. For our colleagues who recall, this is a couple of steps in a process of convening as the Expropriations Committee and moving through the motions. So we're going to proceed through that. In item 6.1, step one is as the approving authority, we are going to convene as the approving authority. So I need a mover and a seconder to do so for the purpose of the expropriation of those lands on Dingman Drive. Counselor Hamu, seconded by Counselor Fife Millar. Any discussion or questions? Okay, that'll open on the screen.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to zero.
Okay, great. I asked the clerk a question, and now I'm going to read it all because his answer was yes. As the expropriating authority, I should read out the entire motion. So I'm going to read the motion, then I'm going to look for a mover and a seconder. That on the recommendation of the Deputy City Manager, Environment and Infrastructure, with concurrence of the Director, Transportation Mobility, on the advice of the Director of Realty Services, the following actions be taken with respect to the expropriation of lands that may be required for the known project as Dingman Drive improvements. A. The Council and Corporation of the City of London as the approving authority pursuant to the Expropriations Act, RSO 1990 E26, as amended hereby approves the proposed expropriation of land as described in Schedule A, as appended to the staff report dated March 22, 2022. Here, two, in the City of London, County of Middlesex, it being noted that the reasons for making the decision are as follows. One, the subject lands are required by the Corporation of the City of London for the Dingman Drive improvements project. Two, the design of the project will address the current and future transportation demands along the corridor. Three, the design is in accordance with the Municipal Class Environmental Assessment Study recommendations for the Dingman Drive improvements project approved by municipal council at the meeting held May 21, 2019. And B, subject to the approval of A, a certificate of approval be issued by the City Clerk on behalf of the approving authority prescribed in form, it being noted that a single request for a hearing of necessity was received but withdrawn in February of 2022. Mover and a seconder for that. Seconded by Counselor Lewis. Any discussion on this as the approval authority? Okay, then I'm going to call the vote.
Counselor Cassidy.
Sorry, I vote yes. My system is messed up. I got kicked out of Zoom, and now I'm not in eScribe either. So manually, yes.
Very good. Closing the vote. Motion carries.
Okay, now I need a motion that the meeting be adjourned and that municipal council reconvene in regular session. Moved by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Van Mirburgan. Any discussion? No. Oh, it's adjourned. We'll put that in the system.
Counselor Turner. Thank you. Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to zero.
That's good news because counsel is the expropriation authority. I don't have to read out the next motion. It's in your package. It's item 6.2. I'll look for a mover and a seconder for that. Seconded by Counselor Ploza. Any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to zero.
Okay, I'm going to look for a motion 6.3 and 6.4 to have those items put in the appropriate sections in the agenda. Those are communications related to a couple of items we're dealing with today. I need a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Counselor Hamu, seconded by Counselor Cassidy. Any discussion? Okay, we'll open that in the system.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to zero.
Okay, there are no motions which notice is given. We're on to reports, and the first report we'll start with is the fourth report of the Corporate Services Committee, and I will turn it over to Chair Counselor Lewis to present that report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Morgan. I have item seven on our agenda. That was 4.1, the election sign bylaw update that I have a request to pull from Counselor Cassidy as she has a proposal to make on that. Everything else was supported unanimously by committee. There were no divided votes, so I will put items one through six and item eight on the floor.
Okay, any discussion on those items that are on the floor? Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you. And through you and the committee chair, with regard to number four, which is the crest for tender for the revenue from lease of city-owned farmland, I think these are three-year contracts, and I wondered what would happen if counsel decided to use that land or perhaps break that lease if there's a way to get out of it, if we had some other municipal purpose for one of those properties.
I'll have to go to our staff for the answer to that one. I'm unsure on who's going to stick handle that one, but I'll look to our staff to comment on the counselor's question.
Through you, Deputy Mayor, it's Bill Warner, Director of Realty Services. I can answer that question.
Thanks. Go ahead, Mr. Warner.
Yes, so when negotiating the lease agreements, standard policy is we do provide for termination provisions if there is a reason to just continue with the lease. However, there would be compensation for things like crop loss and other damages if necessary. So there is a provision that does protect the municipality in those instances. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Counselor. Any other questions on the items that are on the floor before us? Okay, seeing none, we'll open those items for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to zero.
Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will now put item six on the floor. This is the election sign bylaw update. There were a couple of divided votes at committee on particulars of this, although the committee did end up passing what was ultimately agreed upon, but I believe Counselor Cassidy has an amendment she would like to propose.
Thanks, Counselor. I believe it's item seven.
Oh, sorry, item seven, yes.
And Counselor Cassidy, I got your hand up, so I'll go to you.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So I had proposed a couple of amendments at committee. One failed on a tie and one failed on a vote of two to four, but I have spoken to Counselor Lewis, and we talked about amending or making a slight change to my amendment. So the clerk has the wording, I believe, and I unfortunately don't have my email back up again. Let me pull it up quickly because I was having system issues. No, it doesn't want me to get into my email. So what I had proposed as the first amendment was that no person shall permit or place -- shall place a permit to be placed on an -- to be placed an election sign for a municipal election, except an election sign which is placed on a campaign office or on the property on which the campaign office sits, provided consent of the owner of the property and obtained and furnished to an enforcement officer upon demand no earlier than nomination day. So what -- how I would like to reintroduce that amendment but with a slight change, and the -- an exception to that being not only a campaign office but also private property. So it would allow, say, Mrs. Morgan to put her son's election sign on her lawn when she felt it was appropriate to do so, as long as your nomination papers were filed. So I know that Counselor Lewis and I had worked on some wording, and it has been sent to the clerks. Unfortunately, I can't see it in front of me because of my email issues going on right now.
I'm going to have the clerk read it out, and then it's going to take him just a second to put it up in the system so others can see. Once people have seen it, I can ask for a seconder on that.
The unedited draft wording that we were provided was that section 3.2 be amended to no person shall place or permit to be placed an election sign for a municipal election, except an election sign which is placed on a campaign office or private property, A, earlier than nomination day in the year of a regular election.
Okay, we're going to get that up in the system momentarily for you. Counselor Cassidy would like to move that amendment, and Counselor Lewis is willing to second it. Okay, so discussion on that amendment, colleagues? I'll go to Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you. So just hoping to get an understanding of this. The time at which someone can file their papers, I believe, is sometime in May. Perhaps -- do you have that -- that date?
Counselor, I'm just going to have you hold for one second. I just have to confer with the clerk on an item. Colleagues, I'll let you know what we're conferring on. Given there's a bylaw attached to this, too, we have the wording for the motion, but the clerk is just assessing the extent that the bylaw would need to be changed to have that ready for municipal council tonight. So I just want to understand that so we can decide if this is a proceed today or refer back and have that all taken care of and approved at a future meeting. Just so people know what we're voting on. Certainly, if we -- if our intent is to make this change, it would be ideal to know whether we're making it tonight or at a future meeting, given there's a bylaw portion to this item as well. a bylaw portion to this item as well. Colleagues, I'm just gonna explain what the clerk is identifying to me. There's certainly a regular election and a by-election. Some of these changes in the bylaw may require a slightly different language to be able to cover all of the situations. It may be if we want to make some changes that we need to send this back through a committee cycle to make sure that we have the proper bylaw attached to it, given the bylaw will come into force. So if you give, you give me just a minute, the clerk is just conferring with the other staff who supported the development of the bylaw to see the scope of the changes and whether it's their recommendation that we, if we're supportive of this, that we send it back through a committee cycle to make sure that the bylaw is all clean and crisp and very functional, given it will be used this year in the municipal election, obviously. Counselor Cassidy and Counselor Lewis as the mover and second, I'm just gonna give you a little information. The clerk said it's ideal for us to make sure that we get the bylaw right. There is a CSC meeting next week. One of the options, if you're looking to make a number of changes to the bylaw as it came through committee, is to refer it to that committee meeting next week, to have staff bring forward a draft with the proposed changes that you're looking to have incorporated into that. That way, we can do the double check at committee, make sure the bylaw's all right, run it through the committee and bring it back to council in time before the election cycle starts and the bylaw would come into need and effect. So that would be the recommendation that we would make. So I would ask if you could withdraw the amendment and move that towards a referral motion to next week. And I think it would be advantageous to have some direction on what you would like to see in the renewed draft in that motion, so that that can be all prepared and committee can debate it. Counselor Cassidy, you're the mover, I'll go to you.
Okay, thank you. As long as that's not going to, I know the meeting is next week. If the clerks are and the staff are good, that we will still have the bylaw finished in time? And they're good with that?
I got a thumbs up from the clerk, who is liaising with all the other members. I'm not sure if all their thumbs are up too. They might be, they might be a little ways up, but the clerk says yes, so I'm confident in them then.
So, so Mr. Presiding Officer, then I will change my motion to refer it back to staff to prepare an amended draft by law that would amend section three point two, as we earlier discussed, and also to amend section three point four, to change that from ninety-six hours to seventy-two hours. And that's the amount of time that signs would need to be collected.
And Counselor Lewis, you're okay to second that? Okay. We're gonna get that wording right while we have the debate and discussion on this. So this is now a referral back to have a draft by law at CSC next week with those two changes incorporated into it. Counselor Van Holst, do you have your hand up? And I'm sorry, I was confering with the clerk when you spoke earlier. I apologize for cutting you off, but now I just wanted to make sure we got the right process so that we can, we can get this done. Go ahead.
Thank you. And no problem. Appreciate, we're proceeding with the right process. My question and concern was that we could have, because of the amendment, counselors could have signs out as early as May, say, May second or May third, while a, the provincial election is going on and doesn't conclude, I think, until June second. So that might be some, some confusion out there. Is that, is that what would happen as a result of this, as a result of the change?
Yes, I see Counselor Lewis has his hand up, so I'll let him comment on that as he's discussed it with the mover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to Counselor Van Holst and to all colleagues, really. The intent of what Counselor Cassidy and I are suggesting here is that, you know, the large majority of the complaints we get about sign placement, sightline obstructions, those are coming from public property. And there's a great appetite to reduce sign pollution on public property. Where we don't get the complaints is people putting a sign on their lawn for the person that they have chosen to support, whether that's the chair's mother, who happens to be a resident of his ward, or whether that's my brother, or Counselor Hamu's sister, or whomever that might be. In terms of placing them out, Counselor Van Holst through the chair, certainly there could be some overlap. We, however, don't control the timing of provincial elections, and so we wouldn't be able to craft a bylaw that would prohibit, at least in my opinion, that would prohibit an overlap. We have a federal minority. Theoretically, an election call could come next week. Hope it doesn't, but that's not something that we can really craft a bylaw around. So the intent here is to allow personal freedom, at least that's my, my opinion, in terms of the private homeowner. There may be people, certainly I would say for myself, I would want to wait till the provincial election is over before putting my signs out, but I think that would be up to the individual candidates to choose. So I hope that that helps, Counselor Van Holst, in terms of responding to your question there.
Counselor Van Holst, I'll go back to you.
Okay, thank you. So at, at the meeting, I believe, we changed the rules a little bit so that on public property, signs, property, signs could be put out a couple weeks before nomination day. Is that, is that still in effect? Is that part of the bylaw with, with these amendments?
I'll go to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Noel, Counselor Van Holst, this would, the language in the subsection A would restore the public signs to nomination day before they can go out.
All right. Thank you. Well, I understand what's, what's on there and happy to discuss it or think about it further at the, till the meeting at Corporate Services next week.
Okay, other discussion? We're just gonna get the language up before I call a vote. Okay, if the mover and second could just read the language as they see it, if you refresh your screens, make sure you're okay with that. If you are, and there's no further questions, I see a thumbs up from one. But let me know when you are, Counselor Cassidy, and then I'll just ask if there's any further questions by colleagues, and then if there aren't, I'll open the vote. Okay. Any further discussion? Oh, Counselor Cassidy, go ahead.
Sorry, I just, sorry, Mr. Chair, I just noticed at the last second, it's actually changing from ninety-six to seventy-two. Not the other way around. It's already at ninety-six, so the amendment is to change it to seventy-two hours. That's the B part.
The clerk says he's making that change.
Thank you.
This is exactly why you want to get these things right through committee, because that would have been a significant difference. So thanks for catching that, Counselor Cassidy. We'll also have another chance, if this passes, to take another run at it through committee. I will say while we're waiting, my mom would be completely embarrassed that we were talking about her lawn or her political leanings, which I hope is for me, but it's a, it's a secret ballot, so who knows? Okay, it should be, it should be proper now if everybody refreshes their screen. And it looks like it says on mine, from ninety-six to seventy-two. Okay, everybody's good with that? No further questions? All right, let's open this referral for voting.
Counselor Helmer?
I'm in favor.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero.
That concludes the fourth report of the Corporate Services Committee. Thank you. Eight point two, fourth report of the Civic Works Committee. I'll turn it over to the Chair, Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is a pleasure to present the fourth report of the Civic Works Committee. I have not been given notice to pull anything for committee's information. Everything was unanimous vote from committee with no amendments having been made to anything.
Okay, the chair is putting everything on the floor. Does anybody have any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chair, if no one's pulling anything, can I actually introduce the?
Absolutely. Oh, Counselor Hopkins, are you looking to pull something?
No, just make a comment.
Okay, I'll go to the chair first to make some comments, and I'll come to you next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The key items in this were the mobility master plan, appointing a consultation consultant, recognizing this will be a big plan and undertaking for the city and an important part in this work. Item four point one was the active transportation fund. This is a time-sensitive one to go in to get an agreement with the other levels of government for up to four point five million dollars. And the projects have been identified within this report. Some debate around this one at committee and through the community, wanting to know more information about these projects, being the Stony Creek TVP, South Branch Extension for the TVP, so Meadow Lily Woods area, the Hyde Park Rotary Trail Extension and Mud Creek Trail. Earlier last night, an information package did come from staff to your inboxes for all the council with maps attached, where you can actually see the areas that they're looking at, realizing no detailed plans have been done yet, and it's still up for community feedback. And I believe Counselor Hillier has posted those, that information as well to the Meadow Lily Woods Facebook group. For the community can start getting a handle on this and provide their counselor with feedback. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. And I just want to speak to the number eight, four point one, on the active transportation fund. And my thanks to staff for getting the maps to us. I know there was requests there and really appreciate seeing the maps and where these projects may go. And I know the timelines were very short, so thanks to staff to get all this together. I also want to advise the community too, that there will be public participation process through especially the two large projects, the Stony Creek and the South Branch TVP as well, which is really important. There's a lot of questions in the community, and it's really important to have that public participation process throughout the, the project. So my thanks again.
Thanks Counselor, I'll go to Counselor Cassidy next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to say thanks to staff for the, for the active transportation project report. And thank you to the other levels of government for this funding as well. It's so important. It allows us to do these kinds of acts, active transportation projects that might be seen as, you know, nice to haves when we're wrestling with our multi-year budget every four years, and we're trying to keep property taxes low for the residents of London. So being able to do these kinds of projects, it adds so much value to the lives of the citizens of London. So that northern connection of Stony Creek, the Stony Creek TVP, just last year, or just during the pandemic, was when, last year was during the pandemic, when two connections were made across Stony Creek to allow the path to connect between Richmond and Adelaide Street. So two bridges were actually put in place so that lands that the city already had access to could be connected without our having to acquire additional land. So that's the reason for the bridges, and also made the most sense in that particular connection. That path is so, so well-used, and especially when lockdown first happened, people couldn't wait for those bridges to be installed. And now to see this connection, providing a connection from Windermere directly to this, the same network of the TVP that exists, it's, it is so well-used and it is so loved by the community. It is, it's very valuable. And I know the ultimate goal is to have complete connectivity throughout the city, all four corners of the Thames Valley Parkway. When that happens, that will be a really great day for London. But seeing staff chip away at these, these, these gaps bit by bit, and their, their tenacity and relentlessness and ensuring that this connectivity actually finally happens one day is, is heartening. And, and I'm really glad for the people that live in the area to see these kinds of connections. They really do love them. So thank you so much.
Thanks. Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna very briefly comment on the active transportation fund as well. I want to thank Ms. Sharon and her team for getting us those maps yesterday so that we could take a look at them. It was a great opportunity for me to respond to a few folks in my ward who were concerned about trails going through Meadow Lily Woods and potential paving of those. And of course, on the maps, the preferred route shows that it's going to actually come up Meadow Lily Road south. And then there are two potential eastward connections into the citywide sports park, and I think both of those are viable options that stay outside the ESA. These connections are important, but so too are our ESAs. And I'm really glad that the options that are being put forward here in the maps right now is the preferred, knowing that the detailed design still has to be done, won't compromise any further the integrity of the Meadow Lily Woods ESA. And I want to take this opportunity to underscore what Counselor Cassidy just said too. I know that people struggle with, why is money being spent on this at a time when there's so many other pressing needs? But when funds come from a senior level of government that allow us to take a, an infrastructure project like this off of our own capital costs and have Canada fund it rather than the city fund it fully, that's actually a win for property taxpayers. And people should make no mistake, if we say no to these funds, another community will happily take what we don't take. So it's not a matter of take this money and spend it on something else that's not allowed. And it's not a question of, of don't do it and somehow the nation is going to save tax dollars because those funds because those funds will just roll out to another community. It's important to me that London gets its fair share. I know this was a very short turnaround time for our staff, and there wasn't a lot of opportunity for a huge amount of consultation, but these were all projects that were on the books anyway for future development, and so the fact that we can move them ahead a little bit early is good news, and thanks to our federal partners for helping out with some of this funding.
Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to speak to the one item on here, the Mud Creek Trail Connection. About a year into my term at office, I had a wonderful visit with a lady who lives near this pathway, and we went for a walk along it, goes along the creek. It was very overgrown, uncapped, I don't think many people even knew this pathway existed. It's a very important connection because it actually cuts across the southwest corner of Oxford and Wonderland, connecting Oxford farther down to Wonderland with allowing pedestrians and cyclists to not have to go through that very busy corner. Also, on our walk, I thought this is really a pretty creek. So, you know, I did work with staff to advise them of the benefits of enhancing this pathway. Challenge was to find funding, and of course, COVID delayed things. So, I'm very happy to see this, making use of the funding available. It's a connection for my ward down to the TVP, which even though a lot of my ward borders on the river, TVP is on the other side of the river, so inaccessibility to that pathway for cyclists and pedestrians can be a challenge. So, this goes towards, towards that accessibility. So, I want to thank staff for working hard to get this included in this round of funding.
Any further comments? Okay, that's been, that, well, it's the entire committee report, although there were comments on numerous items, is on the floor by, moved by the Chair, I will open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0.
Next on our list is the fifth report of the SPPC Committee Meeting, this was one that I chaired back, earlier in March, I'll have Counselor Lewis present this report, given I'm chairing this meeting.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, we did have two divided votes at this, this SPPC. Item six, the 4.1 on the committee agenda, the Development Charge Area Rating Policy Review, and we do have an added DC study from our staff on there, so that one is going to be pulled to be dealt with separately. And item 10, the Palace Theatre Arts Commons Loan Forgiveness Business Case, was also a divided vote on Section B of that vote, so I'll pull that one as well. As I know Counselor Van Mirbergen voted differently, and we'll provide that opportunity to him again tonight to do so. I'll put the rest of the items on the floor.
Would anybody like anything else pulled out of that particular package of items, aside from the two that the Counselor noted? No? Okay, comments and questions on the package of items that has been moved by Counselor Lewis? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Counselor Hopkins?
It's not coming up, I will vote yes.
Thank you, closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0.
Counselor Lewis?
Item six, 4.1 from the committee agenda, that's the Development Charge Area Rating Policy Review. This was a referral back to our staff, since then, we've had an added communication from our staff, and I would suggest perhaps if Mr. Yeoman or another member of our staff wished to speak to this, that it might be an opportunity to highlight the added communication on our agenda.
Ms. Barbon?
Thank you, through the chairs, so I, I'm happy to start, and if Mr. Yeoman would like to go through. So, we've provided, we had heard from a number of counselors that additional clarity would certainly be helpful to provide a little bit more background on development charges in general, and specific to the area ratings. So, we believe that the slide deck that we've provided in your package this evening provides a little bit more context and understanding of the broader development charge framework that might be useful as you consider this report. Certainly, from our perspective, really just, you know, I'm not going to walk through the report, but I think certainly does give a little bit of information specific to area rating, and what works well in terms of trying to put an area rating in place. Certainly, it is one of those things that area rating is most defensible when there is clear identifiable areas where servicing is not required, and therefore, it's unreasonable to charge a levy, so that is certainly one of the things that we took into account when the consultants did their study in looking for opportunities, that levies may differ, and would allow us to charge a different area rate based on the infrastructure that is there. The, the purpose of development charges is specifically to recover funding to support growth infrastructure investments that are driven by a growing and expanding city. It's not typically used as a planning tool to promote desired forms of development. So, there's very clear things within the Development Charges Act that we can do and need to be mindful of so that we can properly support any changes that are, or rates that may differ. So, hopefully, that is helpful and provides a little bit of additional clarity to the council.
Okay, I'll look for questions and comments on this. Counselor Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to staff, perhaps to Mr. Yeoman, and thanks for preparing this for us since the last SPPC. It's helpful information. One of the, the components that this talks about is area rating, and Ms. Barbon talked about this a second ago too, is helpful for areas that are discreet in their use of servicing, or it can be clearly identified where those servicing costs or can be attributed directly to that area. Are there areas of development within the city that are current or proposed that, that might fit those characteristics? I'm thinking things like the old Victoria Development Area, things that are on the periphery that tend to be generally isolated from, from the rest of the network, that, that could be identified as discreet from, from the remainder of municipality servicing, and the impacts that it might have collectively.
Mr. Yeoman?
Through you, Mr. Presiding Officer. During our review, we did investigate whether there were actual areas that we could hive off and determine that we could develop a discrete charge for them. Unfortunately, we have determined that there aren't those areas that do exist anymore. Some of the servicing for the old Victoria Hospital lands you mentioned, it's already been identified and booked and committed for. That one area that probably would have been a candidate at the time, could have been the southwest area of the city, given the large amount of investment that was required in that area, that was somewhat discreet from the rest of the city. But as it's been evolving and the infrastructure is being installed, it's part of the network broader now, and we don't think that we can actually hive off certain areas to develop any rates.
Counselor?
Through Presiding Officer, thank you. It wasn't the, the old Victoria Hospital lands, it was the, the old Victoria, what's it called, the road, kind of Meadow-Lilly, or Meadow-Lilly, and in that area out east on Commissioners. That's been expanded upon there, that tends to be fairly discreet from everything else as it grows. And, because it doesn't seem to be as connected to, it's got the river that intersects it, it's got Commissioners, there's no growth to the south at the present, but there will be over time as, as those lands start to expand out to the east and fill out that area. Do those, do those count as well?
Mr. Yeoman?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Presiding Officer, it's a very good question, and it sort of goes to the nature too about the, the long-term nature of DC recovery as well. So, for a lot of the servicing that's provided for that area is actually installed back in the 1990s. I think many will recall the tunnel that was installed under the Thames and the infrastructure that was provided there as well. So, over time, we're recovering for debt for our previous investments, and we're also making sure that we're sort of having a long-term recovery for it, so that people are making a contribution to growth costs, even though development does take sometimes a longer period to occur in an area than sort of a five-year window, for example.
Thank you, I appreciate the responses, I appreciate the amount of work that's gone into, to getting this background information for us, and the amount of work to, to do the, the report in general. Development financing is complex, it has a significant impact on the way we finance our, our growth within the city. I will disagree with Ms. Barbon a little bit, it is quite, quite a valid and potential policy tool to be able to use to help direct growth a little bit. It's not used as that, but it can be, and especially as we're taking a look at things through a climate lens. This is an opportunity for us to do this, so I, I completely recognize the entanglements that are associated with, with how the servicing happens. I, I can't support the recommendation, I'm going to vote against it. But, but I do understand that the basis for the recommendation, and I don't disagree with the basis for it. But this is, this is two, two kicks at the can for us so far that have been on council, for us to start moving towards some area ratings, and we, my, my feeling, we just haven't gotten far enough on that.
Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Chair, and I just, this can potentially be a little complicated, I just want to make sure that folks are, are clear on what they will be voting on. So, at committee, what was passed was a referral back to civic administration. That is still the motion that's on the floor, is a referral back for further study and development. Since committee, we've had an additional report come from staff, which was appended to our agenda tonight, which was what Ms. Barbon went over very briefly with us here, everybody has had a chance to read it. So, I just want to be clear, if you vote no, you're voting against referring it to staff for further work, and then we wouldn't have a recommendation from committee, and a new motion would have to be put on the floor, which might be to support staff's original recommendation, it might be something completely different. If you vote yes, then we're referring this back to staff for additional work before they bring it back to us. So, I just want to be clear that right now, what's on the floor is a referral as recommended by committee.
That's correct, Counselor, I'll go to Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Lewis, for clarifying that, because it does get a little complicated. If you are supporting the referral back, I have a question through you, Mr. Presiding Officer, too. I assume, Mr. Yeoman, with the heart of this referral, would we be also taking the opportunity to review other planning tools that could be used to encourage intensification and infill opportunities?
Mr. Yeoman?
Thank you, through you, so the, the nature of the referral back was scoped exclusively to the, the DC recommendation that was before you. So, I think that perhaps Mr. Mead just might be able to speak to some of the other work that's ongoing related to those tools, but it's outside the scope of what's before committee right now, or council right now, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Helmer?
Well, thank you, speaking to the recommendation, I find the report from staff, this sort of update to the council meetings, basically communicating the information that I wanted to see from the referral in the first place, which is what is the magnitude of what could be adjusted if we were to pursue storm in particular? And seeing the numbers, you know, the $200 to $300 per unit, I don't think that that's worth pursuing, myself. I think that that would be a lot of work to undertake, could be subject to appeal, and in the grand scheme of things, it's not enough of a change to probably impact the decision-making of people who are planning out development projects, nor is it really solving any kind of huge inequity in the existing system. You know, moving 1% from this side to that side is just not a very big change in the overall scheme of things. So, I think the issues that exist in the current DC bylaw, and how we intensify within the built area boundary and encourage that are better dealt with outside of the area rating process, I think it's important that we looked at it. I think, you know, I'm very concerned about the idea still of planning out what would area rating look like for servicing outside the urban growth boundary, and so I'm not going to support that part of the recommendation that came from staff. But the other part, which is to go ahead with the area rating inside, outside, there, and growth boundary, which we've had in place for a while, I think based on the numbers that I'm seeing here from the update, I'm, I'm happy to support that for the, for the time being. I think that's the right thing to do now, given the magnitude of what we're talking about, even if we were to pursue storm, you know, all the way to the limit, I just don't think it's significant enough to warrant extra work and the potential appeals to the overall DC bylaw, which could come, could come about. So, never say I didn't change my mind, I don't think a referral is necessary anymore, and I really appreciate the work of staff to turn this around and just give us a rough cut of what the potential shift might be. So, I'm going to vote against the referral, and I'm happy to support the first two parts of that recommendation, but not the third part of the staff recommendation. So, we could call that separately if we get to that.
Yes, I'll let colleagues know, if it gets to that, our staff are prepared to bring the information on the original recommendation forward for council's consideration, and we can certainly go over the, the, the three components that were contained within that, and, and divide it separately if colleagues would like that. That is, of course, if the referral is defeated, and I will continue debate on that referral. And I don't see any more, so this is, this is the motion on the referral, which was the committee's recommendation that I will open for voting.
Counselor Hopkins? Closing the vote, motion fails, 1 to 2.
Okay, I will, at this time, look for someone to put an alternate on the floor, Counselor Lewis?
I'll put the original staff recommendation on the floor, Mr. Chair, and, and understanding that I know Counselor Helmer is going to want these called separately.
I have a second, and Counselor Lehman's put up his, his two for a second. I'm going to, give me one sec. Colleagues, just because this happened, I think it was, what was it, March 8th or something? I'm just going to have the clerk read the three components, we, we will deal with them separately, but I want colleagues to be well aware of, of what the motion is on the floor now, just to make sure that you've, you've got that before you. So, if the, if the clerk could just read what the components of the original staff recommendation are that are now on the floor, moved by Counselor Lewis and seconded by Counselor Lehman, that would, I think, help us be very clear on what it is. We're not going to put all three of those up together because they're going to be voted on separately, so this will just save us a step.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The motion reads that, on the recommendation of the Deputy City Manager, finance support, the following actions be taken. Part A, the attached memorandum from Hemson Consulting, which was Appendix A, on a recommended area rating approach for the 2025 Development Charges Background Study be received for information. Part B, the civic administration be directed to continue to implement an area rating approach of levying development charges within the urban growth boundary and outside the urban growth boundary for the 2025 Development Charges Background Study. And part C, the civic administration be directed to continue a review and analysis of area rating where services need to be extended in order to accommodate anticipated development. where services need to be extended in order to accommodate anticipated development. Should the urban growth boundary be expanded? And I will be able to put up each section of that as you require, but the entire motion is loaded into e-scribe for members to see.
Excellent. Thank you. And I believe, uh, the request I have right now is to call A and B separate from C. So if everybody's okay with that, we can proceed with A and B and then C. Any objections to that? No, I see no one suggesting that's a problem. So same mover, same seconder, and we'll, uh, ask you to put A and B up. Any discussion on A and B? Okay, seeing none, we're going to open A and B for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 12 to 1.
We will now put part C on the floor, uh, also moved by Counselor Lewis and seconded by Counselor Lehman. Discussion on part C. Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries.
Counselor Lewis.
Uh, thank you Chair. The last item on, uh, the fifth report of SPPC is item 10. This is the Palace Theater Commons Loan Forgiveness. There was a, a two-part motion that was a divided vote, um, uh, on this. So I've pulled this so that, uh, Counselor Van Mirbergen, should he wish to, uh, can vote nay on part B again. But I will put both on the floor and, and Counselor Van Mirbergen's nodding that he'd like them called separately. So if we can deal with A and B separately.
Just tell me which one you want to put on the floor first.
I'll put A on the floor first.
All right, Counselor Lewis is putting A on the floor, uh, in, uh, item, uh, 10, 5.1, the Palace Theater Commons Loan Forgiveness Business Case. That's, uh, uh, it was just a mover because, uh, it's a report presentation. Is there any discussion on this? No? Okay, we'll open A for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 13 to 0.
Counselor?
And I will now.
Okay, part P is on the floor. Uh, it is moved by the, uh, presenting officer there. And, uh, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll open B for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 12 to 1.
And that concludes the fifth report of SPPC. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have, uh, the fifth report of, uh, Planning and Environment Committee. I will turn it over to Chair Counselor Hopkins to present that report.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. And we have had two Planning and Environment Committee meetings, uh, since the last council meeting. The first one I would like to, uh, put on the floor is the fifth report with the Planning and Environment Committee. I've heard from no one to pull anything.
Counselor Van Holst, you wanted something dealt with separately?
Perhaps, uh, number five. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I think I'm looking at the report number six or number on the fifth report right now. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're on the fifth, uh, Counselor Van Holst.
Are you okay with the entire fifth report then? Okay, uh, does anybody want anything from the fifth report dealt with separately? Okay, then, uh, I'll turn it back over to you, Counselor Hopkins, with the entire fifth report on the floor.
Yes, uh, thank you. And, uh, we have on the, we, we had on the agenda a number of, uh, holding provisions to be lifted as well as a number of heritage alteration permits. And, uh, and no building agreement as well. And there were a number of three, in fact, public participation meetings as well as the EPAC report.
All right, any comments or questions on the fifth report or items contained within? Okay, seeing none, we will open the fifth report of PEC for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 13 to 0.
Thank you. I'd like to. Board of the Planning and Environment Committee, I have, uh, had a request to pull number five, which is 2.4, 1985 Agour Road from Counselor Van Holst. And I would like to also pull number 11, which is James Street. I'll be pulling that myself as we've received quite a few, uh, letters since our meeting.
Okay, would anybody else like anything, uh, other than those two items dealt with separately? Counselor Hamu.
I just wanted to let everybody know that, um, I would have had a conflict, um, with item 3.1, which is, what number is that? On the regular report?
Number eight?
Yeah, number eight. Um, but I had a dis, I had, um, contacted, um, legal counsel and they told me that I was no longer in conflict. My mother moved, so now it's, we're clear. So I can vote on these things.
Okay, thank you for that, uh, information. Uh, any, want, uh, want anything other than the two items, uh, which is, uh, five and 11 dealt with separately? No? Okay, uh, Counselor Hopkins, uh, the rest are on the floor. I'll turn it back to you for any comments and, uh, when you're ready, I can open the vote.
Yeah, thank you. So the sixth report, uh, there were a number of holding provisions, uh, again lifted. A T-PAC report, uh, we did receive the draft Victoria, uh, Park Secondary Plan. And it is going out for circulation as well as the update for the LDD Moth Proposed Management Plan for 2022. We also had a number of public participation meetings. And with that, I'll put the rest on the floor.
Great. I have, uh, one speaker so far and Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say I'm happy to see the Victoria Park Secondary Plan moving along. This is something that's, um, been in a few years in the making and, and that's a good thing because it means a lot of public engagement is taking place as usually happens with these secondary plans, that they are areas of great interest to the, to the surrounding community. And in the case of Victoria Park, it is an area of great interest for the entire city. So I think it's, it's, um, it's, uh, overdue that we've, uh, brought this forward as, um, an initiative. I'm happy to see it, uh, continuing and I'm happy with some of the, uh, changes that I've noticed in this latest iteration of the draft. So thank you to staff and thank you to everyone in the community who continues to be engaged in this and, uh, brings their comments forward, attends meetings and, and makes sure that, uh, that their, uh, point of view is, uh, is heard and considered. Thank you.
Any further comments? Okay, then for all of the items except the two that were excluded, uh, we will open that this for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 13 to 0. I, I do note, uh, uh, in the wording, it says 6, 2.5. I believe that should be 5, 2.4.
Okay, so, uh, you're saying that change was fine? Okay. So we'll put 5, 2.4 on the floor now by Counselor Hopkins. I assume you're good to put that on the floor, Counselor? Okay, and Counselor Van Holst, uh, you wanted to make some comments?
Uh, yes, thank you. Actually asked, uh, a couple of questions through staff and, and I apologize, I suppose I could give them, uh, prior notice for this, but, uh, this has been, um, I've had some questions from property owners near this. And I was hoping that staff could provide us, uh, some, some information on what, what's happening in the future. Uh, the concern is how we service River Road. Because I believe there was a plan previously to extend Skalen, uh, Skalen Road from, from River Road to, to where it, where, uh, this property is, uh, 1885, uh, a, a storm and, and, um, and perhaps sanitary as well. So, uh, and, uh, the property owners were under the impression that that was how they were going to be serviced. Uh, the, the big issue is stormwater and there, there just seems to be confusion about how, how will they be, how will they be dealt with? And so I wonder if staff at this time can provide, uh, any, any insight into what's going to happen in the future for those, uh, for the servicing of, of the River Road properties.
Mr. Mayders.
To the Presiding Officer, um, a couple of comments there. So we, we have worked with the applicant. We actually have a site meeting that's, that we're, uh, planning to have with the applicant and their consulting engineer and planning representatives, um, in the near future is just in the next. They're actually just coordinating that meeting right now. It's going to include, uh, both staff from the planning and development area, but also staff from, uh, the environmental and infrastructure area as well. So when we've taken a preliminary look at this site, um, it would be extremely difficult to service, uh, the, the, uh, lands to the south via, um, the Scanlon Road, um, extension, even if that, uh, was something that was going to be going through. So when we look at it from a stormwater perspective, it appears that there is another opportunity to drain some of these lands in the area. And, uh, we'll be working directly with the, with the, um, the property owners in the area to be able to come up with a solution.
Good, Counselor.
Okay, I think that's very encouraging to hear. Uh, thank you very much to, to, to staff for that response.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments on this particular item? If not, uh, we will open item five, which is 2.4, uh, 1985 Agour Road for voting.
Counselor Helmer, uh, thank you. Closing the vote, uh, motion carries, 13 to 0.
Back to you, Counselor Hopkins.
And next up, I'd like to put number 11, which is 3.4. It is a zoning application to facilitate a two-story, 22-unit townhouse complex on 6756 James Street. I, uh, I think I'm able to speak to it. It was supported by everyone at the, uh, planning committee, uh, but I do have a couple of questions.
Sure. Uh, so if you're willing to put it on the floor, I, I'll let you go ahead with your questions.
Yes, thank you. Um, um, colleagues, you could see the amount of, uh, uh, letters that we've received since the planning committee meeting. And there's still a number of, uh, unanswered questions that remains, uh, within the community. And I want to have, take this opportunity to, to give some clarification, uh, so through you, Mr. Presiding Officer, to staff. My, my first question is, we've seen the number of letters, uh, a, about the, at the planning and the drawings uh, and the, um, the misses of the width amounts, um, in, in, uh, and the requirements that basically falsely depicts that this can, this development could proceed. And I, I would like to, uh, ask staff, um, uh, do we need new concepts or new drawings, uh, given, uh, I'm not sure how correct these figures are, but the figures that we have is my first question through you.
This is the, this is the, uh, is it going to be Mr. Barrett, perhaps?
Yes, Mr. Barrett, if he's here. If not?
Yes, thank you, uh, to, uh, to you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Uh, we've gone back and we've confirmed the dimensions with respect to the widths and I apologize, I'm just trying to pull up the correct, uh, diagram right now. But I, I, I did actually go back myself and look at it. Just one moment, please. I've got the, uh, uh, part of the issue was the width across the front and whether or not, in fact, uh, the units, the driveway and the yard setbacks could all be accommodated. I actually appear to now have just run into the same problem that Counselor Cassidy had earlier. If you allow me a moment, I'm just going to try to refresh the screen. The, um, total lot frontage, uh, provides an opportunity for a three-meter side yard on the first unit adjacent to the property located at 6770 James Street. Uh, then those three units, uh, can be accommodated. Then there's the opportunity for a 1.5-meter sidewalk, 6.7-meter wide, uh, driveway, another 1.5-meter sidewalk, and then a 5.7-meter side yard adjacent to the property at 6742. Um, all of those dimensions are in conformity with zoning. Uh, the driveway width, uh, is, meets the site plan requirements for the two-way access into the interior of the site, uh, and the remainder of the units. I can also confirm with respect to the dimensions that the, uh, proposed front yard setbacks, uh, align, uh, the frontage of the three units that would front on James Street. Uh, to, uh, be consistent with the, uh, frontage of the street, of the houses on the north side of James Street. They do vary in their frontage, but the frontage of these units would be, uh, very close to the setback of the existing property at 6770 James Street, which is the property immediately adjacent to the west. Also, uh, the dimensions where those units at the north end of the property or the interior of the property. In fact, the first units, the units both on the west side adjacent to McEckern School and the units on the east side adjacent to the existing vacant land actually do not start until they are, uh, past the rear yard limits of the adjacent properties. So, uh, uh, in summary, the frontage, uh, units are consistent with the front yard setbacks, uh, along James Street. Um, they're sufficient with to accommodate both the side yard setback on the Westerly unit. And there's sufficient setback to accommodate sidewalks on both sides of the entrance driveway as well as, uh, landscaped open space on the east side. And then with respect to the year rear yard setbacks, as I said, the, uh, units in fact, uh, don't start until beyond the rear yards of the adjacent properties to both the east and the west. So the, the dimensions of the site do work to accommodate the proposed development.
Thank you for that, Mr. Barrett. I think, um, the, it, it, the community needs that clarification because, um, it, it, it's important to know that we as a council, um, need to understand that we're trying, um, to meet all the conforming requirements to meet the zoning. And I'm glad to hear that. I know there may be a little bit of confusion. I think one of the changes in the, in, in the application was to, to move the front of, of the buildings, the, at the front to conform to the rest of the, uh, front setbacks to the other houses that remain. And, uh, that was a slight change, but I, I'm, I, I, I think depending on what plans you're looking at, uh, we need to understand that was the change and it meets the requirements. I, uh, my second question is around the drainage and the water issues that's then, still tend to be a concern in the community. And those of you know, Lambeth one time, I think, was underwater. And I know when we develop, there's always that question around how are we going to deal with the water? And I want to make sure that we are with, with the zoning. And I want to make sure that we are with the zoning application needing the drainage and the surface water to hopefully improve the water in this area. It's a question just to make sure that we are taking a look at the concerns.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion on this item?
If I may, just to sum it up as well?
Sure, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. I know we heard from the community about their concerns with the amount of parking that's going on on James Street with the access from the Lambeth Public School. It's good to know that we are getting a school in the Lambeth area coming soon. I hope in the Boswick and Pack Road area. But in the meantime, the community, the neighborhood is going to experience the added construction. And I would like to make a comment about if we can come up with a construction plan that could at least look at having the access come off another road, not just James Street, to sort of alleviate the pressure. I know as we move forward with the zoning application, there'll be a site plan application. And the community is welcome to reach out to staff or to me to get updates on the site plan process. And I just want to say on behalf of the community, looking forward to that crossover on Campbell that I know is needed as hopefully the students and teachers could use the baseball parking lot that exists and sort of park there to sort of help, you know, balance the concerns in the neighborhood. Because there's so much development going on in this neighborhood. You could see all the subdivisions to the north. We've got this townhouse in, so. But it was supported at planning. It is a low-density form of development. And with that, I'll put the zoning application on the floor.
Okay, thank you. With that, I don't see anyone else looking to speak on this, so we will open it for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero.
Okay, and I think that wraps. Right? Perfect.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We're on to the fourth report of Community and Protective Services Committee. I will turn it over to the Chair, Counselor Cassidy, to present the report.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I've been asked by Counselor Van Holst to pull item ten, which is four point three on the committee report. They draft bylaws regarding the distribution of graphic flyers to residential properties. I haven't been asked to pull anything else, but I see Counselor Van Meirbergen's hand up.
Counselor Van Meirbergen.
Thank you. I do have, I'd like to declare a conflict on four point one as my wife operates her own daycare, so I will prepare that.
Great, we can deal with that separate. Anyone else looking for something dealt separately? Okay, I'll turn it back to you, Counselor Cassidy.
I will put the remainder of the report. So that's everything except for clause eight and clause ten. I will just note that clause seven was, it was a bit of a split vote, but it was the mayor who voted separately from the rest of committee, and he's not here. So we shouldn't have to pull that separately. It was approved by the committee that we would maintain what is currently in our bylaw for approved foster organizations. And these are groups that foster animals that don't currently have a home, whether they are strays or abandoned animals or whatever, on the advice of our staff veterinarian and our advisory committee on the welfare of animals, welfare advisory committee, animal welfare advisory committee, sorry. Both had asked council not to put a limit because that would limit the number of organizations that are doing these fostering. And also the animals tend to come into a home for a short period of time and then go out to individuals who will take these individual animals either as a long-term companion animal or again as a longer-term foster situation. So we listened to the experts on this and decided to continue with the current bylaw, which has no limits for the number of animals in these foster situations. So I will put the report on the floor.
Okay, is there any comments on everything excluding? No? Okay, then we're going to open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero.
Okay, so I will put clause eight on the floor. And with that, we had a delegation from Ms. Pilak, who's the Executive Director of the Oak Park Cooperative Children's Center and also represents a consortium of childcare operators in the city. And she came to us and asked that we support their efforts to have the province sign on to the National Daycare Strategy. So the recommendation coming from committee is that the mayor be requested to call on the provincial government to sign the bilateral childcare agreement before March thirty-first. And what happens after March thirty-first is that the province would lose a billion dollars in federal funding if that deadline is passed without signing the agreement. The mayor's also asked in his letter to emphasize the importance of growing the highly-trained workforce of early childhood educators in Ontario. And Counselor Helmer added that the mayor, in his letter, thanked the Licensed Childcare Network for their advocacy. So that was a unanimous motion passed by the committee, and I'm happy to put that on the floor.
Great, any comments further from colleagues on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll open this one, item eight, which is four point one from the committee report for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries twelve to zero with one recused.
I'm just going to note that there's a number of people who I don't think are aware that their microphones are unmuted. So we get some muffling noises as you shuffle things there. So just give a double check and make sure your microphone's muted if you're not speaking. Counselor Cassidy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. That leaves us with item ten or four point three from the committee report. The committee unanimously is recommending to council that city staff, that the proposed bylaw be introduced as it's shown in the report. I will put that on the floor. Counselor Van Holst has asked that to be pulled.
Counselor Van Holst, and then I will go to you next, Counselor Hillier.
Thank you much, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So looking at this issue, it's similar to a previous one we spoke about today in that it involves some government overreach, which is something I always hope we can avoid. Looking at the objective arguments against this bylaw, it's not a municipal issue, a remedy already exists, the remedy's being honored. Our bylaw will be challenged. The LTC has lost a similar lawsuit. No other municipality has taken this course, presumably because they think they would be defeated if challenged. This puts our tax dollars on the line in terms of the challenge. And we're going to be accused of violating the Constitution, of overstepping our authority, of not acting impartially. And there can be other unintended consequences as well. So I hope that the remaining voters would vote against this. There was a number of arguments for it that are more subjective. There was the idea that people shouldn't have to use the Trespass the Property Act in order to protect their rights. And it's my feeling that people should do that because if you don't take actions to protect your rights, somebody's going to come along and try and take them away, which is exactly what we're going to be accused of doing if we pass this. I would also say that if we don't respect the limits of our office, then people may have a harder time respecting the bylaws that come forth from it. Maybe the last thing is that we can try to look at this in the small version of the issue. And that's just in the graphic nature of these flyers. But when it goes to court, it's going to be attached to a much bigger issue, which is of course the pro-life and pro-choice debate. And there's a number of worldviews that just can't be homogenized about this. There's the people who believe that life begins at birth. People believe that life begins at conception. And then many people believe it begins before that. And I'm referring to the religions that hold the doctrine of reincarnation. So those kinds of ideas aren't going to change just because we implement administrative monetary penalty. So I don't think it helps resolve what's really a dysfunctional debate, I think, in our society. So we really need to find ways to come together on this, not push each other further apart. So I prefer that we, as counselors, promote the remedy that's already existing. And I know that's something that other communities do as well. It's the Trespass the Property Act. And do that rather than make London the battleground for a court case and a larger debate that we are likely to lose. So those are my comments.
I had Counselor Hillier on the list. Then I have Counselor Lewis, Hamul, and Turner.
Thank you very much. We've all received a lot of communications on this. And I have no problem with people wanting their freedoms of expression, but I think there's a miscommunication that you cannot just display anything you want in public. We have rules, there are rules in place. You can't put whatever you want on a billboard or at a public participation meeting. And one of the reasons is some of the material is not suitable for children. They can't see it because they don't have the maturity to grasp what's being presented to them. I'm looking at this issue the same way pornography was dealt with in variety stores years ago. They were forced to cover graphic nudity and only show the title. I feel this issue could be treated the same way. This allows anyone who wants to read it, simply unwrap it or not. Having an open, visible literature on the doorstep eliminates the choice for parents to protect their children from this. And it's allowing a stranger a right to put whatever they want in front of their kids on the front step. I don't believe this is what the freedom of expression is meant. I would like to propose a referral back to staff to explore the possibility of requiring any literature that is being left at the door to be required the same public requirements as outdoor displays and even our public participation meetings.
Counselor, you're moving a referral, is that what you're asking to do?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Hillier would like to refer this back to staff for the reasons he mentioned. Is there a second or two to that? Counselor Van Meirbergen. Counselor, to be helpful with your referral motion, you said refer back for these purposes. Can you repeat that again so that we can attach that to the motion, so that the referral has some context to it?
I'll refer back to explore the possibility that any literature being left at the door be required to meet the same public requirements as outdoor displays or even our public participation meetings. I'm not sure, I like, the wording within one of those would probably be appropriate. What governs our outdoor displays and what you can put up? And even our public, if we can't put it at a public participation meeting, how can someone put it at our front door?
I got, we got just enough to craft something up. We'll make sure that you and the second are okay with it. But the second, you have a comment? Go ahead, Counselor Van Meirbergen.
Yes, thank you, Acting Mayor. I heard the mover, Counselor Hillier, mention about exploring the possibility of requiring some type of wrap. If we could have that and if it's agreeable to the mover, also explored when it goes back to staff, that they look at the feasibility of having these types of communication, graphic communications in some form of wrap.
Okay, just give us a moment to convert that into your referral motion. And then, while we do that, I'm going to have debate on the referral. But I will have the referral motion confirmed by both the mover and the second before we vote on it. So Counselor, I have an original speaker's list. I'm going to start a new one, given we're on the referral now. So if you were on the original one, I'm going to hold that for, in case the referral's defeated, I'll go back to that. But for now, I'm going to start a new list on the referral. And I have Counselor Cassidy, I have Counselor Lewis, and Counselor Lehman so far. So Counselor Cassidy, on the referral.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. And thank you through you to Counselor Hillier for making this suggestion. I actually like it. And I wonder if the mover and second might add to their referral motion that there be a graphic warning on the outside cover or the envelope or whatever it's in so that people know before they open it what to expect.
Okay, I'll go to the next speaker on the list, which is Counselor Lewis. Beatya, Counselor Lehman, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, while I appreciate what Counselor Hillier is suggesting, I quite honestly, having considered this before, don't think it's something that we can encapsulate in a bylaw. And I'm not going to support the referral. I think we've had a lot of discussion on this. If the referral fails and we get back to the main motion, I'm going to suggest a slight amendment to what was passed at committee. But this debate has been going on a long time. And it's not going to end today, whether we refer or whether we pass a bylaw. It's going to continue. But what we've heard time and time again is from residents, the impact that this is having on their feelings of safety and well-being in their own homes. So I'm going to encourage people to get to a decision point tonight. Let's not refer this back any further and look for other ways. If in the future we need to look at an alternate solution, let's look at an alternate solution. But let's not delay taking some action any further. This has been well, I think, over a year now in the process. And I hope that we're at a point where we can make a decision.
Counselor Lehman.
Thank you. I think we're all in agreement here. The images that are seen in this material are disturbing and disgusting. I see that in signs carried and demonstrations outside of the hospitals. For me, that's not the issue. The issue is, would such a bylaw hold up in court? And from what I've read from our legal counsel, I have deep concerns about that. So I was looking for a way to proceed here. And I think Counselor Hillier might have touched on something. So I have some questions for the city solicitor, probably on advice of the chair, if we should go in camera.
Well, I guess my question is, before we do that, are your questions pursuant to you voting for the referral? Or is that the type of questions that you would have when this comes back? I just want to be clear that it's relevant for today and not for the future.
My question to the solicitor will be the same lines of information he provided on the original motion. I want to follow that up with the solicitor in regards to the referral. Uh, I wanted to uh follow that up with the solicitor uh in regards to the referral.
So if you need advice on this, um certainly you can uh request a motion to move into camera to get uh advice on this. Uh, you'll need a seconder. Um, so I'll look for that. Councillor Lewis is willing to second. I see actually all sorts of hands up. Um, sounds like something that uh well, we'll have, well, is there any, is there any debate on on the move to go into camera for legal advice on this? Do you have? I'm just going to hold to make sure that we have the proper reason, and we're going to read a reason out since this reason isn't listed on our public agenda um before I call any sort of vote on moving into camera. This will just take one second, uh colleagues. Councillor Hopkins, are your hands up?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I'm trying to get the uh words for the referral. I'd like to know what we're talking about here. I know the question is if we go in in camera for legal advice, but I just would like to get some substance here to the referral.
Just give me one second.
Thank you.
Uh, councillor Hopkins, and for the rest of colleagues, uh the wording of the um uh motion is is now in available in eScribe, and and that's a very stute comment, councillor Hopkins, given we're asking legal advice. I'm sure that the those giving the legal advice will want to know what the wording of the motion is. So um, so it is up in eScribe, and if any colleagues uh don't have access to that, uh we will ensure that you have a copy, but just uh you'll have to let us know. Um, but if you refresh your eScri- eScribe screen, you should see uh the motion as it's currently constituted. So the clerk is going to read the reason um for going into camera, and after that, I will open the vote on going into camera.
Thank you. And uh through the acting mayor, uh that the council convened in closed session in order to consider advices that is subject to solicitor client privilege with respect to potential bylaws to regulate the distribution of graphic flyers to residential properties, uh including uh requirements for uh covering.
Yeah.
Sorry?
Councillor Van Meerebergen, you're not muted.
Including requirements uh for covering such as an outer wrap.
Okay, that that is the reason we're going into camera. Uh, that is the what we will talk about in camera, so if everybody needs to be okay with that scope. Okay, uh, then I will call the question on moving into camera to receive that advice.
Councillor Layman, councillor Van Hulst. Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero.
A few minutes to transition into uh in-camera color.